We've got to get everybody here.
Councilmember Garcia. What is it tonight?
It's like herding cats. Herding cats, yeah.
Herding cats. Come on, come on. Let's get this going. I don't know, we've lost one councilmember already, so, I don't know. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the city council meeting to order. Please note the attendance. We have two folks for the open forum tonight. I will first call Mary Barnes to come up and speak. Please make sure that that mic's on and that you sign in afterwards.
Testing.
You can sign in afterwards, so you can talk now. You can do that.
I was told there is nothing on the agenda and I could have all night.
Yeah, right. Okay, sure, Mayor.
So, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and to our television audience, I am here on behalf of the Richfield VFW, the Fred Babcock Four Fives. Richfield has a rich history of military, including Charles Lindbergh. Every year, a contest is held for high schools. Lynn Gunderson and Linda Walker, I believe, was here about a month ago and spoke about the contest. I was at the midwinter conference and these young people were absolutely amazing. I am the junior vice at the VFW, so all of this is new to me, but I'm in charge of Americanism. We have a spring coloring contest coming up for the kindergarten through second and the third and the fourth graders. The theme POW and MIA, Persons of War and Missing in Action. Or Prisoners of War, I'm sorry. The Four Fives have given numerous awards to St. Anthony Middle School in Minneapolis. I know for a fact that a Richfield student could and should win. This contest is open to all Minnesota elementary students and even students that are homeschooled. So I've given you all flyers and we are looking for help in getting our children to sign up. And if anybody has questions, you can always call Lynn at the VFW. And their phone number is (612) 869-5555. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you for coming and letting us know. I know that for the Voice of Democracy speech, they made a big, big push and we got a lot of people in, so it's really exciting to see that, so really happy to see that. Susan Rosenberg.
Good evening. My name is Susan Rosenberg, 6633 Thomas Avenue South. And I'm here tonight to ask you to reconsider and open your discussion on signs, particularly sandwich signs. I work for Loaves and Fishes and we have two dining sites in Richfield. And at the Hope Dining Site, they have been asked not to put out the sandwich sign that advertises the meal each evening because there is an ordinance against sandwich signs. You know, when I was on the council, I kind of remember doing that. But I'm just asking you to reconsider and open the discussion on this because it is really necessary for Human Services to have a way to advertise, particularly us, meals for guests and people in need here, right here in Richfield. And if we can't have the sandwich sign up, it really would hamper how people, you know, find out where we're at. I have talked to the site coordinator there and she has, is willing to just put it out, like maybe an hour before the meal, and then pick it up every evening that she's there. We serve Monday through Thursday there, and then we serve on Saturday and Sunday at Woodlake. Haven't had any kind of feedback from the Woodlake site and their sign, but it's probably just because no one's reported it or something. But at Hope, we really do need those signs and have the ability to put those out. But there is an ordinance there and I know this will take some time and some discussion with you guys. Been there, done that. So, but I just, I'm just asking for some reconsideration. It would really help us a lot with the Loaves and Fishes and the meal that we serve.
Okay.
From five to six, Monday through Thursday there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming, Susan. Okay.
I hope, hopefully, we're going to be looking at that, then.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I will tell you that, you know, you have your goal-setting session coming up.
Yep.
We, as a staff, do our own internal goal-setting. And one of our items for 2016 is to do exactly that, to evaluate the sandwich board signs, try to go back in time and figure out what the intent was of prohibiting them and seeing if there's a way we can figure out a solution.
Maybe for nonprofits, too, or other things, yeah.
Something. Yeah, something. I think anybody that hears that Loaves and Fishes needs to have sandwich, needs to have some temporary signage out on the nights that they're serving meals can't hear that and understand that we need to change something.
Yeah.
To figure out a way for that to happen.
I appreciate that, John, because I know you and I have exchanged emails and Matt and I have exchanged emails on this. And I thought, well, I'll just come to the source. I know them all.
Yeah.
I'll ask them.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Would everybody please stand and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'd ask the approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of January 25th, 2016, the special city council work session of January 26, 2016, the special concurrent city council HRA and Planning Commission work session of January 26, 2016, and the regular city council meeting of January 26, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Hats off to hometown hits and council discussion here. Michael?
Sure. I had a couple items. One was in the Star Tribune last week, just a great story about Richfield High School that I wanted to just share and make sure people had seen. That just gave me such pride in our students at Richfield. They selected for their winter prom, the Fire and Ice Homecoming King, and Jesse Anderson was selected the homecoming king. Jesse has autism and it was apparently just a fantastic, he was so excited, his parents and grandparents were there. And this is the part of the story that it was just so great to read and I just wanted to just read from the story. And from what Jesse said, that while high school is sometimes perceived as a difficult place to be different, Jesse said he has long felt accepted at his school despite being autistic. Other students have always, quote, "treated me with kindness and respect." And he said that allowing him to come out of his shell and be himself during the past four years has been great. And Teresa Rosen, Assistant Principal, said that with its diverse student body, acceptance of others is part of Richfield High School's identity. And it just made me just so happy to be part of, to be part of the city and just what a great testament to the student body and the work at the school. So I just wanted to make sure people had a chance to see that.
Oh, that's wonderful.
And then you might want to speak to this, because I know you were there today, but...
Oh, I'll talk to that.
Well, I'll just let you do that one.
Okay.
Very good.
All right. Councilmember, it's center.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Got a couple items. We talked about the Noise Oversight Committee and we might have to sign something with the news, the new noise modeling. Right after I said it, the MAC again did a little testing and found out they're not happy with the new model.
Oh.
So that'll be put on hold until that gets fixed. So we'll see what happens with it. And I'm just glad they're taking their time and doing things right. I think we're the only airport in the country that's scrutinizing this and I'm not sure that the FAA is happy, but we'll be happy with the end report because we've done such a good job before. We got something to base it on. And when we compare the two models, they aren't working out as well.
I remember you telling me there was problems before.
Yeah, so...
Well, we might as well get that all worked out before we move forward.
Yeah, so we're not going to be moving on that. And then I did attend the Civil Service Commission and we had talked about during the commission interviews that we were looking at making the members larger. And after, at the meeting, and city attorney also commented, we have to leave it at three accorded statute. Am I correct there? So, okay, so that's off the table and we have the three members, but I was delighted with the discussion they had, their thinking, and they seemed to work well together and bring up items of concerns and work them out. So I was pleased with that meeting. And the other one, I wanted to give a public service announcement. I have, I'm at the Governor's Emergency Managers Meeting talking to all these cops and that today. I get home and I get two phone calls saying the IRS is going to come arrest me.
I have two, didn't I? I have that to confirm.
So I actually recorded them. If people want to hear the nonsense, and I don't know how well this will work, let's see. It's that bad to record them. Here's the next one, right after.
And they have different phone numbers, too.
They're different phone numbers. If you Google the phone numbers, they are in the complaint saying that they're, it's a scam.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to tell people, first of all, the recording's poor, their English is poor, and you can tell it's typed and then they play a voice because, you know, they don't, they use proper, improper English and you'll hear the, all through there. But I just wanted to warn people, if I'm getting it, and now the mayor said they got...
They got them on my cellphone. So I called them back and I told them, I said, "I know you guys are a scam and I'm going to turn you into the Attorney General's office." That's it.
Yeah, and the numbers rotate real fast. So if you don't, and you're going to end up, did you hear a kind of Indian voice, Eastern Indian? Okay. So I just wanted to throw it out there, to let our people know that if you get any questions, you know, call the PD, but it's out there and it's...
Really good.
We're going to let our city manager speak to it, I guess.
Yeah, I couldn't believe that and everything. I'm just beside myself when they're calling my cellphone. I don't know how they got my cellphone number.
Yeah, it's pretty pathetic. Well, I mean, it might be the Indian IRS that's trying to get over you. I don't know.
I haven't traveled there, Steve, everywhere else.
Okay, well, all right. The only thing I'll say for people is, you know, it's a pretty well-known fact, the IRS does not contact people by telephone. They never contact people by telephone. If you're going to get contacted by our friends at IRS, you're going to get a letter. And when you get the letter, you know, that looks pretty official, but IRS would never contact the person by phone. So that, your first, your first clue that someone's scamming you is if you get a phone call that says, "Hi, we're from the IRS and we're going to file a lawsuit against you." They simply wouldn't contact you that way.
So I'm done with my public service announcement for today, so.
Oh, man. I can't believe you and me both. My god, Edwina?
Their annual dinner, April the 29th, and it's $50, but you have a choice, I believe, of four different, you know, chicken, fish, meat.
Steak and a vegan.
Yes. And then, what are we going to learn about? Oh, yeah, the monarch butterflies. So that's going to be something people come out for. Last year, people came out to hear about the bees and...
That was good.
Yeah, it was exciting, yeah. And there'll be prizes, there's be a silent auction, there'll be gifts, and it's just a lot of fun. And believe me, those tickets will go fast, so if you have a mind to go, stop by Woodlake Nature Center and purchase a ticket.
Great. Councilmember Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. This is a follow-up on Councilmember Howard there. I'm sure everybody saw the article in the Star Tribune about the demise of hockey in Richfield.
Yeah.
And it could have been read a couple ways when they talked about the diversity and the socioeconomic status of Richfield. And I think it didn't, it didn't directly lead to a misconception of who we are, what we are. But, and I, all in all, it was a fairly, fairly well-written article about the difficulties in maintaining a hockey program, not just in a first-string suburb or in the inner city, just the fact that it's an enormously expensive sport that is 11 months out of a year now, so it's really hard to stay competitive. But what I wanted to say about that is about three days later, there was a letter to the editor from Aaron Tepp, who has taught at the high school for about the last 20 years and did an outstanding job talking about the academic credentials and awards that the Richfield High School students win, the diversity of the school itself. But more importantly, it's something that I can remember when my kids were at Richfield. And we had, I remember one neighbor that moved to Chanhasan, another went out to Chaska, and said they were moving away because it was becoming too black, too Asian, too Hispanic. And, and my kids' whole concept of that whole thing was, this is the world we live in now and it's the world we're going to be living in. You know, this is the most, this is a melting pot of the world and it's, it's the best process to get ready to move out into the real world because everybody we're going to be dealing with in the real world, we're dealing with in high school now, and they're friends and teammates and everything else. So there was two ways of approaching that, and it's the same way we approach it now. We're welcoming, we've got enormous diversity and it creates a much stronger community and stronger affiliations between all our, all our citizens, regardless of ethnicity or origin. So I think that, that you couldn't think of a better place to raise your kids and bring them up and have them go to school than in Richfield because it's, it's creating the world that they're going to be working and living in, so I think it's outstanding. The second thing is, and this is somewhat bittersweet, I don't think there's anybody that watched the dialogue and the votes in regards to taking 18 homes in West Richfield has any misconceptions of how I felt about that.
Yeah.
And still do. But I guess the whole thing is, and I never did this when I was younger, but I've become not great, but better at putting things in the rearview mirror and looking forward to what's coming as opposed to what I'm so mad about in the past. And when I go down and see some of the homes and the opening the spaces and the house, the castle that's down now, I can look into Monroe Park and can kind of visualize. I still think we're overbuilding and, but the homes are gone and I'm past that, but you can have a vision of a broad parkway going down 66th Street and I have to admit, it's, it's exciting. Still missing the homes.
Yeah.
And, and I don't, I don't feel bad about the votes I made in that regard, but I can see the future and, and it's going to be exciting.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the bittersweet.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, thank you. That's a great perspective to look at that, you know, and there are things that I want that I don't always get to when I come to council. And you know, the best thing is, is to move forward and figure out how to make the best of everything and make it the best we can because that's what we do for our residents and that's what we're supposed to do. That's why we're in office. Thank you, Councilmember. I think that's great.
Those are good, two good issues.
Yeah.
Did well tonight.
Yep.
Councilmember.
Thank you.
Well, so I wanted to talk, you know, I don't know if anybody has seen, but it's Girl Scout Cookie Season, and actually, it was supposed to have a Girl Scout here, but something's happened and our Girl Scouts are not here to pitch their cookies. So I'm hoping there's still time at the next, the next council meeting to do that. Well, I always buy some cookies because one of the programs they have, even though I don't eat them, is a program where you buy cookies and they take them into the nursing homes and give them to the folks and they sit and visit with them, and they love that. And who doesn't love Girl Scout cookies, right? So I've got orders already for my husband and my grandkids. They've already put their orders in and I always buy some for the nursing homes around here. So just be on the, be on the lookout. If you know a Girl Scout caller, she's going to be ready to try to sell her cookies. And they're really good cookies and they're very fresh. I also want to say that I had the opportunity to sit down and meet with the Assistant Superintendent and the Director of Technology over at the schools and real excited about what's going on and the possibilities of what's happening. They're trying to figure out if they want to do a one-to-one program or something akin to that, which means giving each student the use of a tablet, a laptop, an iPad, whatever, or if they let them bring some from home and stuff. But also, in conjunction with that, they're trying to figure out, how do they also educate the parents to that? So the parents, parents can also use it, they want parents to be able to use it. They want them to learn it, too, and they want to be able to feel comfortable, but to close that technological divide. But one of the cool things, and I signed on to help with this, is they want to get a 3D printer. And so they're going to need to do a little extra fundraising for that one. And so I've signed on to help do some of that fundraising for them and get a 3D printer in there. The one that's usually good for the schools is between $7,000 and $8,000, so it's not insurmountable and certainly doable. But if we want our kids, this is the technology of the future, car parts, hospitals are using it, it's going to go the whole gamut, prototypes for all kinds of products. Our children need to know how to do this and everything like this. So I'm looking forward when that 3D printer gets in. I think it's a cool factor. And I said, "I get to go over there and use it, too, don't I?" And they said, "Yeah, I could if I helped." So I just, I signed on for that. You know, I also was, got a call this weekend to attend a meeting over at the Martin Luther King Rec Center with Secretary of Labor, Tom Perez. And it was in regards to family leave and paid sick. And we were asked there because of the work that we just did. Thank you, Michael Howard. We are on the radar because we're progressive, more progressive thinkers as a first-string suburb, so I was representing suburbs. So I was very pleased to do that. The mayors of Minneapolis and St. Paul was there, Keith Ellison was there, our union leaders were there, business leaders were there, and our nonprofits. And we're all sitting at the table and we're going to figure this out. We know we're going to try to move something forward. I mean, it's at the federal level. Governor Dayton just came out with it and I'm really excited about that. And just a couple of months ago, too, in regards to the HUD complaint that we filed, I have met twice now with Julian Castro, who has been in town to talk to us about how to move through this process, too, so the Secretary of HUD. So it's nice to be included in these kinds of conversations. It's not just the big city mayors that are being considered, they're looking at innovation. It's cities the size of Richfield, too. So I feel pretty blessed to be that kind of a city. So I want to thank the staff and the other councilmembers who had the foresight to look at that and say, "Hey, we want to see something different here in regards to housing here in the city of Richfield." So, thank you. Any other hats off, Tom? I'd ask for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We have the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. For those in the audience, the consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on those items will be necessary. Tonight, we have four items on the consent calendar, beginning with item A, consideration of the approval of resolutions supporting dedicated state funding for city streets. Item B is consideration of the approval of the first reading of amendments to the city's zoning ordinance. The proposed ordinance would update daycare facility allowances in all residential districts such that Richfield's regulations are in agreement with those of the state. Item C is consideration of the approval of resolution granting a conditional use permit to reconstruct and expand legally non-conforming accessory structure at Mother Duck Learning Center at 6341 Penn Avenue. And finally, item D, consideration of the approval of first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of property owned by the city of Richfield to the Richfield Housing and redevelopment authority. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have representatives from Mother Duck here, don't we? Don't you want to tell us about your wonderful expansion, real quick? Yeah, tell us what you're doing, what you're adding on and why. I mean, tell us how you're growing. You've been there a long time and you're, it looks like you're doing great business. Yeah, introduce yourselves, please.
So we would like to expand our back building and reconstruct it, but...
And your name?
I'm Michelle.
Michelle.
Can you move the microphone?
Move the, and introduce yourself.
There you go. So...
And our father.
Yep. So we're Mother Duck. And yes, we've been here 25 years.
I know.
But it's actually spurred by the growth of our pre-K program.
Oh.
And so we'd like to give them their old space, aka the schoolhouse.
Okay.
And really just give them that space to be a little more professional, I guess. You know, our pre-K is very, very successful. I mean, they just, they're very accomplished in what they learn. I mean, right now, our pre-K, over half the group can read. I mean, they just do phenomenally well. We just feel that they would do even better with their own little space, so that's what really spurred it, is that we want them, to give them that dedicated space. So that's what we're hoping to do.
All right. When do you, when do you hope to start the construction?
Today. Actually, we had hoped to start like a few months ago, but we've learned over the years that projects take time and there's all, all our city friends to visit with.
Yeah.
So it is a process, but right now, they've been able to start like demolitions, so the building process is actually really quick.
Okay.
Once we get through everything else. So we're hoping to be in there by April.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Amazing. Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just, yeah, when you said 25 years, you know...
That's how old we are.
I know, but you know what? I've, I've been able to successfully create a fiction in my mind that I really haven't aged. But, but I'm sitting here thinking, 25 years ago, you coached my two oldest kids when they were four and five in their first soccer practices, and I'm thinking, they got older, we haven't. I'm not sure how we did that.
Well, thank you.
But, you know, it's amazing, and it really, it really is, is that, and Mr. Howard, you're going to become aware of this very quickly, is that we don't get any older, but our kids do, and I can't figure out how the math works on that, you know?
No. We can't either.
No.
But you've been, you've been great for the community. You were great neighbors when you lived in the neighborhood and, you know, you've done great things with, with your Mother Duck and everything, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks.
It's a great city.
Yeah. Great. Wonderful. Thank you for coming. City managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Well, tonight, I've got some things. Number one is a reminder that on Thursday morning at 7:30, that is February 11th, we have our legislative meeting right here in the Bartholmy Room, and we'll have kind of a light breakfast, we'll have some food, coffee, et cetera. To that end, tomorrow, because we're just finishing it up today, tomorrow morning, we will send out, we have a draft of the legislative priorities that staff put together. And, you know, take a look at it and you might find some things that you want to put on it as well. And that's why it's stamped "Draft." That's what, that's what staff will work off of on Thursday morning. I think it might cover a lot of the things that we've talked to you about or things that you might have, might be looking at yourselves, but, you know, if there's something else on there, by all means, you know, bring it up on Thursday. And then we'll put together a final, a final sheet. I'd like to do it on, you know, one page, both sides, and then we laminate it. And I think this year, what I'd like to do is, I'd like, instead of mailing it out when it's all done, I think I want to bring it out there and just hand-deliver it to each of our legislative representatives, just to make some contact with, with people and...
Oh, I'd love to go out there anyway with you because I'd love to go see the new building.
Yeah, sure.
So let me know.
We should do that.
We can do that.
Yeah, that'd be a good thing.
Got to say hello.
And then finally, with respect to the HUD complaint, what's been going on recently on the staff level is that all the city managers of the three cities were contacted directly by staff members from that council.
Yeah, I know, I heard about that.
And they wanted to talk with us. And so, you know, there was a discussion between the city managers of Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center, myself, and Myron Orfield and Michael Allen, the attorney representing the cities. And what's going to happen is that we're going to have a meeting, the three city managers are going to meet in Brooklyn Park and talk to Myron Orfield. And then we are going to have a meeting where we're simply going to listen to Met Council staff on what they have to say. I, I don't think that, and I think the others agree with me, I don't really think that we should say anything, we, the city managers, should say a word, other than just listen to what they have to say. I think that's the most cordial and respectful thing to do. Find out what they have to say and, and take it away from there and find out if there's some, if there's some ground there to, to resolve our differences. But we're not, we're not...
So will Myron and the attorney be at that meeting or just the attorney?
I don't think the attorney is going to be there. Michael Allen, I don't believe is going to be there.
At the, at the Met Council meeting?
No. Right. It's just going to be...